We will do roll call. Mike Bullier.
Mike Bullier, Hebron.
Mike Sharon.
Mike Sharon, Hebron.
Joe Coletti.
Joe Coletti, Hebron.
Kirsten Erlinson.
Kirsten Erlinson, Ann Arbor.
Pam Barrington.
Pam Barrington, Marlboro.
Carrie Fralino.
Carrie Fralino, Marlboro.
Drew Galton.
Drew Galton, Marlboro.
Gabe Marks.
Gabe Marks, Hebron.
Amy Romancheck.
Amy Romancheck, Marlboro.
Scott Soyet.
Scott Soyet, Andover.
And Heather Summer from Hebron. If we can all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God in this home.
Thank you. Okay. Public comments. Hebron, Andover, and Marlboro, community engagement and attendance at BOE public meetings is welcomed. The public comment segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the BOE may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes, and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the BOE is limited by the Freedom of Information Act to discussing only matters on the agenda, the BOE is not permitted to engage in a discussion of the comments presented. Do we have anybody who'd like to make public comment? Go to the mic and state your name and the town you're with.
Hi, my name is Heidi Hines. I am a resident of Andover, a Ram teacher, and a mom to a softball player. I am here tonight to make public comment about the Ram softball trip that was scheduled during April vacation to happen this year that would give the girls the opportunity to compete with peers in a tournament in Florida. This has been denied. The reason it was denied to us was due to a lack of equity and also because it was not tied to an academic class. This is the reasons that we were told. I do want to mention that there is nothing outlined in the current board policy that states that field trips have to have equity or be tied to an academic class. I do want to point out that equity is present in this trip because of fundraising efforts that started last year by the girls and the fundraising efforts that would continue to happen. There are other current groups that currently students cannot participate in because it is an exorbitant amount of money. Not to pick out any club, but Ski Club is an example, $500. Not everybody can afford to do that. We still have Ski Club. I think that it is equitable for our team members to go ahead and compete if they're willing to go ahead and put that price up and fund rates. I'm a single mom. It's hard. It's an expensive trip, but we're making it a priority. So I don't think that because it's not equitable that the rest of the players should be denied the opportunity to compete with their peers. Lastly, we were told it was not tied to an academic class. It is not tied to an academic class, but I do still think that there are academic merit due to the fact that softball, girls' softball, is a scholarship sport. Several of our students compete to hope to earn scholarship money, and the opportunity to participate with your peers in another state is crucial. I think there are other groups that also do participate in these kinds of trips, and I would hate to see this precedent continue. I would request that this be added to the agenda for further discussion by the board. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to make public comment?
Hi, Kristin Strumskis from the town of Hebron. I am here to basically echo everything that Heidi already stated. One thing I do want to add is that my daughter is a member of the softball team as well. She plays competitively on travel. This past, the past couple of years, we have gone to college showcases. I think even though some people may not feel it's equitable, may not be related academically, the exposure for these girls to play on a field outside of our general area is very important. For us, our daughter, if she wants to look at a school, it is very important for these girls to get in front of these schools and these colleges. We're sending them out, the kids are sending their stats, their videos, everything blindly to coaches, hoping they're looking at them. For them, this may be an opportunity to say, hey, coach from Florida State University, I am playing at this field at this time. Come look at me, just like she's doing right now to so many colleges here in the state and in Massachusetts and New Hampshire. It's giving them a broader spectrum to reach out to those colleges that they really want to look at. And I think by just denying this request without further discussion is a huge disservice to these girls academically. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to make public comment? Is there anybody online that would like to make public comment? Okay, thank you. Okay, that brings us to addition and deletion of agenda items for the tonight's agenda. We have, do we have a motion to add Agenda Item 11.6, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the Approval of the 2024-2027 Para-Educator Contract to the Current Agenda Under New Business?
So moved, Scott Soyet.
Second?
I'll second that, Carrie Fralino.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? That brings us to the Student Representative Report. I'd like to welcome the new junior student representative, Brianna Adutoku. Did I say that right? Thank you. I should know, right? Welcome. You want to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Well, my name's Brianna. I'm the new student representative. Really excited to be a part of this. I really enjoy, like, speaking for people and being able to bring up points to the students, so.
Do you want to go ahead and do your report? Do you have anything to report out tonight?
No, no, no.
All right, that brings us to you, Oliver.
It's been a big month with last week. You know, we got school started. The September meeting was kind of dry, but October really kicked off this year. Our distracted driving presentation in September was a really, really eye-opening experience. You know, you see, read articles online, you see videos online, but having somebody come in and speak with you in person, you know, the Ram auditorium, it's just a, you know, like an experience that you say, oh, a lot of our mindsets are, oh, it doesn't happen to me. And then it's, this, our speaker said, he's like, oh, I didn't think it would happen to me, and it did. So it's just, you know, it's an eye-opening experience. I think a lot of the juniors and seniors took a good amount of weight from it. So I was very impressed with that presentation. Our College and Career Fair was a big hit. I think there were a lot of great schools there, a lot of activity. Everybody took handles, everyone was talking about it. It was a really fun experience. It's going along that college line. Now, colleges are visiting for seniors, like Virginia Tech, Lincoln Tech, et cetera, et cetera. Our business seniors. November 1st is the deadline for early application for seniors, including Free Application Day, the CT state colleges. That's a big deadline. I've got a lot of stuff to do before then, and a lot of seniors too. So it's a, we're all buzzing, we're all talking to each other, reading each other's essays, trying to give feedback, kind of a exciting time for seniors. Grade 11 PSATs are happening October 23rd, so Wednesday. Our pep rally just had on Friday, and it was a really exciting experience. A lot of, a lot of excitement. And another November 1st deadline is our AP registration, softball students and seniors. And the last thing I have to say is our fall concert is Thursday.
Great. Okay. That comes to the Board Chair Report. It's very short. I have not been in the state for most of the month, but I was able to make it to the homecoming game, which was very well attended. And it was also great to see the new bleachers set up, and people were, they were full. So that was, that was great. And of course, that night was homecoming. So I think a lot of the students enjoyed that, seeing all the pictures, large groups of kids getting together beforehand. So that's it for me.
So I'll just, I want to also bring into the board, I had the chance to meet with Brana last week and get to know her a little bit and look forward to working with her over the next couple of years. Very excited about that. A couple of things that I'll mention, I don't want to be redundant. Oliver touched on some of the things that I was going to talk about, but I will say that on October 16th of last week, Ram middle school students and staff wore orange to school in recognition of Unity Day. Unity Day promotes the ideas of kindness, acceptance, and inclusion, and wearing orange that day is intended to send a visual message that no, no child should ever have to experience or be subjected to bullying. I want to mention that on Thursday, the 11th, Ram High School volleyball team, who's playing right now, they're playing. They are doing well this season, but they had their annual Dig Pink game, which is quite an event, and it is, works to support breast cancer awareness. During the game, the team raffled off, donated baskets, and sold T-shirts, and raised $5,175 for the Side Out Breast Cancer Foundation to donate to that breast cancer foundation. So I just think that's a great example of our community coming together for a great cause. Finally, I'll just share an update with the board about where we are with regards to the Ram High School becoming a school of choice for Columbia students. The Columbia Board of Education has not yet voted on the topic. I have a meeting scheduled for this week, Wednesday of this week, to discuss tuition and special ed costs with the administration of Columbia Public Schools. And it is my understanding that once these figures are finalized, the Columbia Board of Education will hold a meeting to vote on the issue. So we're hoping to get this buttoned up in the next couple of weeks. And that concludes my report of the superintendent.
Thank you. Brings us to item eight on the agenda, which is the approval of minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the regular September 16th, 2024 Board of Education meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Joe Coletti.
Second.
Gabe Marks. Gabe Marks, second. All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Anyone abstaining? Drew Galton abstained. And that brings us to the Student Program Spotlight, which is Themes in American Literature.
So I'm excited to introduce Meg Coffey and some of her former students who are here with us tonight. Ms. Coffey is an English teacher at Ram High School, and one of the courses that she teaches is called Themes in American Literature. And Mrs. Coffey is here with some of her students from last year to talk about this course and the unique classroom space that they use, that the students get to use. So, the code, yeah, sure.
Yeah, the mic just allows people online to be able to hear you.
Okay, we'll all use the mic.
Yes, please.
I'll be brief, but these are all seniors. And the course runs for juniors. And if you don't know, American literature is a required junior course. At Ram, you have to have four English credits, and there's freshman, sophomore, and then junior, so that's required. So this course fulfills the junior year requirement, but I ask the kids to come back as seniors to talk about it just because they experienced the full breadth of the class so they can speak a little bit more fully about what the outdoor classroom can bring to a learning environment. And I guess I would just say that the reason I created it, I think, I was trying to think on the way here, and I remember filming like a Shakespeare scene with the kids, like by the pond in the corner, and I was like, how's that out there? And I started to explore the area, and I realized that we have, we own 30 acres out there, Ram does. So they'll tell you all about that. But over the last, I think, four or five years, I can't quite remember when I began the course, it's developed significantly, and we use it now as a really lovely outdoor learning space, and they'll tell you all about it. I will say they have, it may sound a little scripted because unfortunately, I don't get to see them. So I kind of said, this is what the slides look like. I threw a bunch of their pictures up. I put a bunch of pictures from this year, and I gave them some things to read, but please ask them a bunch of questions because that's probably more meaningful than just the basic information that they'll provide you. If you could say your name. So I think. So I guess it'll go there, and you can tell on this.
My name is Connor Falckowski. My name is Connor Falckowski. And this is how the course is organized. Our first unit is Earth, second unit is Community, and then our third unit is the Individual. And then the repeating four subtopics, Sense of Place, Innovation, Self-Lives, and Identity. We'd like to tell you a little about the outdoor classroom space and how we use it to learn. So this is the main area where we meet up every day after we walk into the woods. You can see there's a circle of benches in the middle of the woods. This is where we take most of our lessons. This is where she usually talks to us about lessons and maintaining what we do, our work together.
You keep going, but you guys can jump in anytime. Yeah, they keep flipping. Yeah.
All right, these. Were designed by Mr. P, or man, wood shop, built 15 of them.
Yeah, Mr. Popwitz, I didn't know if we could say his name just because it's spelled so specially, but Mr. Popwitz, I'm sure you know him, the maintainer, he's just magical, and he does so much for us.
You can click. And this is another area, right, adjacent to the circle that you saw before.
Beautiful.
Yes. You click. We all have classroom bins that we bring out every day, and they double as desks. You see them using it right there. Go to the next slide. And the smaller areas, we do have more of them. Well, there's like around three or four benches in different areas around the big circle, and those are for group learning, if we're ever doing group projects, so we can have our own space and spread out while doing projects. And these are the trails that we walk. They go, or they come from our circle that we usually go. They go around the entire, what is it?
30 acres.
It goes around the entire 30 acres that we have in a circle, and then comes back up around.
The GPS pointed it. There's this tool that Mr. Popwitz had one day, and we used it in class. And it's actually the shape of Vermont, the trail.
Even if next slide. Yeah, yeah. And we also learned by the pond that we go by to get to the outdoor classroom. Well, we can go there if we want as well, and sit next to the pond like you see these two guys doing.
Yeah, sometimes on a chillier day, the sun hits here better, or if it's like super windy, that's a better spot. Hey, Connor, your name. Oh, I'm sorry.
Garrett Lebec. The 95, which is the number of the land that we own, is the technical address for the Ram wooded property. 117 is the outdoor maintenance building, which is right in the corner. And 85 is obviously the school. This is a satellite image, and it shows the Jeremy River, which is noted on the map that goes through our trails, and it's actually kind of like a big part of our learning experience. Get to build around it and fix stuff. And to the, and that's to the west, is the, the west of the property is the state land. In the first day, first days of class, we spend time mapping and understanding and learning the environment that we have around us. And we make, make sure to know about safety access points. And last year, we were formally named each leg of the trail and added signs so everyone knows where they are on the trail. Our first unit is Earth, and which was, which is where we are introduced into the outdoor classroom. So that's when we first kind of go out there. Our first subunit is Sense of Place, which is how can be, how it can be empowered by a richer and more literature understanding of our place and what's around us. As a part of this, we practice stewardship and taking care of the space, which comes in with the river. As you can see, we build around it to get over it and stuff like that. We learn first aid and wilderness awareness so we know different types of ticks, how to get a tick off you, the poison ivy, what not to touch, stuff like that, how to get somebody out of the woods if they hurt themselves, different, how to make like homemade crutches and different stuff like that to get them out. We also rake and spread woodchips, which we get from Mr. P. And that's also a big part of outdoor classroom. As you can see, there's Connor actually.
Hi, I'm Maya Strumskis. So we work throughout the year to maintain the trails and try keeping them clean so we can go throughout the trails. In the next slide, you can see a picture of us at work. So we use like rakes and like shovels and like clippers so we can keep the trail clean and also work on our spots because certain students actually create different spots along the trail where they can hang out and stuff. And so with the rakes, we'll just like clean up the leaves so we can make it like easy enough for us to go around the trail. And the shovels, sometimes we'll use them to get rid of rocks on the trails and like, just so people don't like trip over rocks and stuff. And with the clippers, we have like bushes that'll grow onto the trail, so we'll clip like the bushes on the side and make it easier for us to walk through. So along the entire trail, there are rock walls, which used to be divided, fought pieces of farmland. And some are newer than others. Like you can definitely tell which ones are on the newer side than the older side, but they're really cool to look at. One of the ways we learn is by visiting stations throughout the trail, usually presented on clipboards. So the clipboards are throughout the entire trail. A lot of them are at different like spots where students can like just work on their work and just hang out. And then like a bunch of the other clipboards are just throughout the trail where you can walk throughout. But I like this method of learning because then we're not just sitting around the entire day, and we can actually move around and just like do stuff. Once we come to know and connect with the space, we look at the tradition of innovation. Innovation writing as stewardship of a shared place. How is nature literacy supported stewardship and positive progress in America? We look at excerpts that show how American authors use writing in innovative ways to bring earth and nature topics to readers. Gratitude for nature is one of the key concepts that comes from the book Braiding Sweetgrass. This wall hanging is made of pictures students took from the outdoor classroom throughout the trail. It's in the English area, and it's actually really cool. Like, if you've been over there, you'll see it. It's like right there. It's really cool to look at them. We also learn about organizations in America that were developed to maintain and innovate the land like the Civilian and Youth Conservation Corps, AmeriCorps, and CT Land Trust. Then we have to use a project development template to come up with our own real or dream innovation for the outdoor classroom. So if you guys could just take a second to read what's on the board. Thank you. Some students made signs throughout the trail, which Garrett actually brought up before. And it tells you where you are on the trail. So if you're new to the trail, it's easy to find your way around. And these also help with emergencies. So if you're like in an emergency situation and you need to like call the school or 911, you can tell where you are and find like one of the spots to find. And then I also brought up how students make different spots along the trail. Yeah.
Can you go back a slide? Thank you. Hello, I'm Diamond Campbell. So this is another spot on the trail where students developed. In the class, we were allowed, like in the beginning of the class, after we take our tests and everything, to be safe on the trail. We're allowed to pick spots on the trail to develop, to make it our own and make it comfortable for when we wanted to, when we were allowed to go on the trail and do our own work. As you can see, these are pictures of more students taking, we cleaned up a lot of areas on the trail to make our own, along with cleaning areas on the trail. Here's a picture of another spot on the trail where students worked when we had time.
My name is Lila Silvestri, and I took this class last year. And one thing I want to say is I would take it a million times over again. I learned a lot more than you would in a traditional English class, and it challenged my creativity, and it showed me what I could do with the resources around me. I learned about myself, my nation, and my town, and my language. So yeah, that's all I wanted to say. And I created my own spot with my friend that classes for the next years will be able to use and learn at. And that's really important to me because I feel like I'm contributing to someone else's learning. Thank you.
So I agree with what Lila said. In this class, take a pause, I kind of, thank you, Lila, because I did want to talk about what she said. This class, I influence a lot of juniors or sophomores, when they are sophomores, to take the class because a lot of people think that, you know, you just go outside and you get to play the whole time, when it's actually serious work. I did, like, my academics was very much challenged in Ms. Coffey's class. I, my reading definitely did improve, and the readings were not always easy. And I'm, I love English, I love to read, but I definitely felt challenged in this class, in a good way. This slide is a picture of a bench made from previous years before I took the class, which also a lot of students liked to relax and do their work at, which was called Sun Class, because a lot of, if you walked through the trail, you can tell that a lot of sun shines right at this spot. It's really pretty. Cause a lot of um, if you walked through the trail, you can tell that a lot of sun shines right at this spot, it's really pretty. Um, our next subtopic, subtopic is the self reliance unit. Where we learned um what we know and reflected on who we are. This class, Ms. Coffee, or in this subtopic. Um Ms. Coffee helped us understand how interaction with the natural world can develop. With the natural world can develop a practical education and promote the American tradition of self reliance. This is a picture of um some garden work that we use. We took plants from the trails, from, from the trail, yes, and we splited them, transplanted them mulch. Plant bulbs and weeds, and we took them from the trail, we added them into the courtyard, which is, you can see if you're walking around in the school. I actually didn't know how to do a lot of that stuff before, Ms. Coffee taught me. Our fourth subtopic is identity, which is nature's influence on identity. And we learned how the voices of American identities, including our own, are characterized by Earth spaces. We read short excerpts from a wide range of authors whose writing reflects the idea of identity in place. We learned about, we learned a lot about the um teachers and staff who work in our school and what they do. And. Yeah, we, we read a lot like from Emerson and Mark Twain. I know those were, those readings were hard, but I also learned a lot. And I think Ms. Coffee put that.
Um, the first like unit we studied was uh the community unit. And we study a lot of like demographic and geography of like our local town, like where like the police station was, like our town hall. I think like, I was really like unique for this class because I didn't know any of that before. It's something really cool. We learned about national parks, I remember this, uh I think, this was actually like the weeks we were inside. And we're in the library and we got to like be with our friends and it was a really cool sideshow, I learned a lot. About like different um national parks. Community jobs. We learned a lot of like, oh, I think it was Miss. He fully, he came in and uh he works as the town mechanic for Marlboro. And he taught us a lot about like community jobs and like how they're really needed and how like what kind of stuff he does. And what like skills you need for him and how important they are to everybody, like. I was just like strong, snow removal and stuff like that, like you don't like think of it as much, but a lot of those people really appreciated me.
I think you should read those, there, there's no explanatory.
I think we watched the.
Great Evaders.
The Great Evaders, that was a really cool movie. Uh building your resume, I believe like the, when we did the resume, it was actually like, it was really cool. Cause Ms. Coffee put a lot of like effort into it and she like gave us all like a lemonade resume. And I actually personally used that for myself this summer at Three Fellas Pizza. And they said that like the lemonade resume was like the best part, like they said that I was huge and nobody did it, it's very unique. And I thank Ms. Coffee for that. Investigating your roots. No, thank you for this one.
I had excerpts, but it got to be pretty long, we're forgetting, so.
Oh, oh yeah, I actually do remember this.
I think you did the animal on. These guys are very, very special, they're wonderful kids and thanks for your attention, I know that goes along, but it's an awesome class. And I'm really appreciative of letting me develop something. You know the saying, be the change you wish to see, that was the best. And it's hard to watch kids sit all day, it's hard to defend the fact the kids have to sit all day. And they were longing for something really practical in education, that's difficult to offer in a literary study, so. My best effort at it, but it's really awesome when I grow up.
Yeah, we get to ask questions.
Tell me you read Thoreau. Did you do Thoreau's, I'm sorry? You also got my favorite author up there, I, I saw Richard Flowers up there, I saw, I saw the.
We do a lot with self reliance and that whole concept and civil disobedience.
And my other question, I think it's for the superintendent, uh how do I sign up as a junior? Thank you very much.
Did you guys, this is a full year course? Do you go out into that area in the winter too?
And boots in her classroom, so we don't have to take her shoes to school, so we have to go out there and get all muddy. She breaks big coats and so we don't kiss her, but we definitely go out there.
It also doesn't give you an excuse, excuse to back out, huh? That's great.
There is a regular.
So is it every day you're out there?
Yeah, mostly, unless it's like raining or storming outside.
Does anybody online have any questions for this group? Anybody else in here? You guys, it was great, it's, this is, the section of the agenda is one of my favorites to have students come in and share. So thank you very much for.
You guys did a great job.
Taking your time.
One, one quick question as we're settling down.
We use the book Try, I don't know if you're familiar with that, but in our community unit. Yeah, thanks and yeah, we'd love to have it.
Yeah, if any board member is interested in getting it, just reach out to me and I can set it up with Ms. Coffee. I know that when I did it, I was not dressed. I had like, yeah, I was definitely dressed for being in an office and being inside, so I, I learned the hard way.
Thank you very much. That brings us to old business, um policy updates related to legislative changes, so.
Yeah, so the board may recall that uh at the last board meeting, I think uh the revision to the policy. On policies was updated, which uh gave me the authority to update. Certain policies if they were simply uh to align our policies with legislative changes. And if they've been recommended by uh to be updated by our attorney, so we did that with three policies. The first one was just two, three, three, two records retention. Um also fifty-four fifty, which is prohibition of sex discrimination related to students. And then forty-one sixty-one was prohibition of sex discrimination related to personnel. Um I just wanted to just, part of the, um, part of that revised policy is that I share the updates with the board. Which I did in an email a few weeks ago, once those changes had been made. And then also the second part of that is just to bring, raise the issue that I've made those changes um at, at a board meeting. So I wanted to make sure that I dotted those i's and crossed those t's.
So ten point two is to review and discuss um policies for the second read.
So um, these are policies that are coming to you all as a second reading. Um I certainly can go through and answer any questions that people might have. Um but I did that, I believe, at our last meeting, there were no questions that I had that came from any of these policies. Um so if you want to go through them, Heather, maybe get motions, and if there are people that were questions, I can certainly do my best to answer them.
Okay, policy four, two, two. Two. Um, do we have a motion to adopt policy four, two, two, two code of ethics personnel as presented?
I'll move.
Scott Soya is first, second. Drew Goffrin, all in favor? Opposed? Anyone abstain? Okay, that motion passes. Um, do we have a motion to adopt policy two, two, one, one administrators appointment as presented?
Summer.
Gabe Marks, second.
Second, Carrie Fralino.
Carrie Fralino, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Anyone abstain? Okay.
Just, just a reminder, we're gonna have some ones coming up for deletion because of the fact that we've adopted that policy and enables us to delete some others. That were coming to you shortly.
Okay. Okay, do we have a motion to adopt policy three, one, two formulation, adoption amendment or deletion of bylaws as presented?
So move to the question that's nine, three, one, two.
What did I say?
I just heard three, one, two.
Sorry. Um, okay, so the, so the motion was made by Scott Soya, a second. Amy Romancheck is the second, any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anyone abstain? Okay, do we have a motion to delete policy two, two, one, three assistant principals appointment?
I'll move to the abolish two, two, one, three.
That was Drew Galton was first and the second was Scott Soya, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Okay. Do we have a motion to delete policy two, two, one, two director of special education appointments?
I'm moving Scott Soya.
Scott Soya, a second. Who's Gabe Marks? Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Anyone abstain? Okay. Uh, do we have a motion to delete policy seven, one, one, two enrollment projections? So Coletti may, uh was first, do we have a second? Okay, any discussion on that one? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anyone abstain? Alright, do we have a motion to delete policy seven, one, one, three evaluating existing buildings? That's Mike Bullier, do we have a second?
All second.
Um Drew Galton, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anyone abstain? Okay, brings us to the last one in old business, do I have a um. A motion to delete policy one, one, six, one health education parent workshop?
So move Scott.
Scott Soya? Uh Carrie Fralino?
Yes.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anyone abstain? Okay. There's a lot in there, okay. Uh, brings us to item eleven on the agenda, which is new business. Um, the Coventry Fire EMS department donation.
So I'll just give a quick context for this, um in your board packet is a gift intention form. Highlighting a donation made by the Coventry Fire EMS department to the Ram High School EMT program. I appreciate Mr. Scorzo filling me in on what this device was, cause I didn't quite know. It is a device that is being donated as a portable suction machine. And it will suction fluid and small particles out of the mouth to prevent choking and aspiration. And Mr. Scorzo, the teacher for the program, will use it to teach students. How to remove fluids and small solids during cardiac arrest, trauma and other emergencies requiring clearance of their mouth. And or oral cavity. The Board of Education Policy on Donation allows the superintendent to accept donations on behalf of the board. Um I just really, I always think it's important that we highlight donations such as this that are being made by the community to really better our programming. Uh I certainly think uh I can speak on Mr. Scorzo's behalf that we appreciate their donation. Um a board member did reach out to me and say, why is the Coventry Fire Department EMS donating something to Ram? Um and that is because Coventry does not have an EMT program, I think is the short answer. Um and uh so we are fortunate enough to benefit from that and uh we're, we're excited to, to have this piece of equipment to use with our students. And I will um certainly send a, a letter acknowledging and thanking the Coventry Fire Department um and EMS Department. For their generous and kind donation on behalf of the board.
Eleven point two is presentation of the twenty twenty-four student assessment data.
So as the board knows, we share student achievement data with the board and the Ram community annually. Uh and at this, and we put together a presentation to do that again this year, and at this time, I would like to invite our principals, Dr. Terusi, Dr. Brazil. And uh as well as our curriculum and Director of Curriculum Instruction, Ms. Ms. Me to the podium to share the data. From the twenty-three, twenty-four academic year.
Alright, well, thank you and good evening. We will start off by just sharing um on the next slide. The various assessments that we have from middle school, high school. Um middle school has smarter balance for grade seven and eight and GSS for grade eight and grade eight PSATs. And then you see that works into the high school, we have PSAT grades nine, ten and eleven. SAT are standardized test for high school and grade eleven. And also NGSS in grade eleven, um and then of course, all of our advanced placement exams that happen in May. So that gives you the general calendar. If you go two slides next, we start with our PSAT nine data. And it compares this past school years to this previous school year. And if you look at the data, you'll notice that the mean score. The percentage of students meeting benchmark and the scores on, well, and, and the score on math. Have all decreased from one year to the next. Um the ERW stayed at eighty percent. Um what you'll also notice is that the state numbers decreased as well at a much more significant level. Um which just recognizes or helps us to see that um. This is not just a phenomenon that's happening in our high school for our grade nine, but um as I said, across the state in all areas. We saw the significant drop for the state in the English area, um where we stayed the same. Alright, the next slide. So again, here the same thing, but with grade ten PSATs. Last year against the year before, you'll see that uh we went up in the mean score from nine seventy-seven to. Ten twenty-four. And then um. We went up also in, in the category of percentage of meeting both benchmarks. And then we went up in English and then we also went up in math, so um those for the PSAT ten, we're seeing growth. And you know, just also pointing out that these are not the same course, these are different grades, different classes of kids. Um so it's just showing. So it's just showing what one group does one year and then what our next group does the next year. So it's not a cohort data. And our SAT eleven. We have the, our RAM scores compared to the state average. And the good news there is that Ram is exceeding the state averages. Ram got four-thirty-six on the reading and writing, five-thirty-six, and state average was four-ninety-three. Math, we earned a five-twenty-four and the state average is four-seventy-three. And total score ten-sixty versus the state at nine-sixty-six. So looking at the SAT data over three years, we will see that there is a, there was a drop from two thousand and twenty-two. We had five-forty-nine, went to five-forty-five, thirty-six, which, you know, isn't extensive, but certainly a downward trend. And then we also went down in the English area, but stayed steady between two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four. And the math scores did decrease over time. And you'll also see though that the state, or I'm sorry, I think I misspoke earlier, our RAM scores went down for English and math. But you will also see that the state comparisons also trended downwards and also below our scores as well. This has been a phenomenon that has been happening across the state since the COVID years. Unfortunately, I think, you know, it just shows that we have, you know, areas that we need to help our students across the board, across the state to get back to on track to where perhaps we might have been seeing them score previous to COVID. The next slide is the cohort data, which I think is the most positive news that we have. Cohort data allows us to look at one particular class over several years and seeing if in fact they are showing growth themselves. So this is where we're not just saying, did you do as well as the last class? We're saying, did you increase every year? Are you showing growth? And you'll see that in the numbers presented here, that that is the trend. So our cohort data is showing that, you know, on the SAT for the class of twenty-twenty-four, when they were ninth grade, they scored a nine-sixty-three, PSAT ten, ten-sixteen, eleven, ten-twenty, and then the actual SAT, which is ten-seventy-three, which is pretty indicative of what's happening across the board in terms of our cohort data, which is, you know, something to celebrate because we know that our students are learning each year and they are getting better and they are improving. And as you can see, that it breaks down with the reading and math as well, showing the upward trends there. The class of twenty-twenty-six only has PSAT nine and ten to look at. That's why the other two areas are shaded out. So we're proud to say that we know that we are helping our kids to move forward, to improve their individual scores, which is not necessarily what they're seeing at the state level. So it is something for us to know that we are having an impact on. So our next slide just covers the variety of AP tests that we administer. AP has obviously been something that has been part of Ram for many years. But each year we build our capacity to have more classes offered, to have more students taking tests and to also do very well on those tests. And those credit, those scores allow students to possibly get college credit when they move on to the next step. And so if you look at the next slide, for last year, we had three hundred and seventy-five number of tests taken. So that's not number of students. That's just the number of tests. So it could be, you know, one student taking multiple tests. And then the number of students who are scoring three, four, or five, three is usually passing. Four and five are usually, wow, you really, you really did very well. And, and that's the five is the highest score you can get. And so out of the three hundred and seventy-five tests taken, three hundred and forty-eight of them were passed, which is a significantly big number. So as you see, when you turn that into a percentage, ninety-two-point-eight percent of our students taking AP exams or ninety-two-point-eight percent of the tests being taken, I should say, students are passing. That's a great number, ninety-two-point-eight percent. So AP thinks, or the college board thinks so also. So we were given the bronze award this year. We've gotten different awards in the past several years for AP. So we just continue to excel in that area. All right. So now we're going to go to middle school data.
Yeah, that's like, so the trend is very similar. You saw the SAT and the PSAT trend at the high school level. Middle school level, we've trended to say, unfortunately, it's trended the same way. I do need to mention that two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, some of you probably got the updated version. I had, for whatever reason, I left it off. They didn't want to look at it. But well, it's a hard, it just was a hard time. And we went through all the data like two or three times. And finally, I realized that last year's data wasn't there. So I made sure it was there for tonight. You can go to the next slide. So this is the trend and I put on the state and the national trend and you'll see the same thing at the heights. If you look, it's hard to read down below, but the numbers at the bottom there basically reflect the fact that Ram has done very well, our eighth graders do very well in terms of the PSAT eight compared to the state and national scores. But again, math seems to have taken a dip. We're going to talk about that in a second when we go to the S VAC score. So you can go to those. So we have data. Now, keep in mind, this is year-to-year data, not cohort data. And so when you look at year-to-year data, we're starting to see a little bit of improvement in all the areas except one. And it sort of sticks out from two thousand twenty-three to twenty-four, our seventh to eighth graders, their math scores dipped by a couple of points. And I think, taking a look at that, it is something that we're interested in figuring out why. There's always a why behind it. We know that we prepare the kids really well for high school because they go on and they are successful in their math and science classes and their English classes overall. And that just basically shows up with the AP scores and the overall ACTs. When you saw the cohort data that Penny, Dr. Brizel presented, you saw that the end result is the scores in the thousand. So we know we're improving on these national tests, these norm reference tests. But for whatever reason, we fluctuate here at the S VAC level. Now, somebody did have a question, why, why did I skip a year? Two thousand eighteen, nineteen, where's the twenty, you know, two thousand nineteen, twenty, and twenty-twenty-one? That's COVID. Honestly, what happened was the state said to, the state pulls the data out. They said you can't use it for comparison. So it has its own data. If you go to the state website, you're interested, you could look at it, but it doesn't really fit the test here. Doesn't, it would not inform us at all. Which is in some ways unfortunate. There's a gap. But when you look at the PSATs, we don't have a gap. We tested during all those years. So let's compare. You go to the next slide. So the next question is, what do we do with the data?
Being the last person in a data presentation is like the worst, right? But I have learned to get very excited about data. So we've been looking at cohort to cohort. But data tells us a story. And so a lot of looking at just the numbers, it gives us sort of the cliff notes of, of what's going on. But if we really want to start to let a story evolve, we have to look a little bit more closely. And we have to ask some different questions and look at data in different relationships. So if you take a look at the chart, this, these pie charts show the top row shows the evidence-based reading and writing from the PSAT eight, which was taken in fall of twenty-two against the PSAT nine, which was taken in spring of twenty-twenty-four with our current seniors, juniors. Wait a minute. Oh, gosh, no, it's spring twenty-four. Oh, seniors. Um, so we see then, no, no, because it's tw- it's, it's, it's PSAT nine. So it's our, it's our kids, they're tenth graders, our current tenth graders. I had everything but that, I had everything but that. My characters are not in play. But you can see, so we just looked at numbers where cohort to cohort, we're seeing that we are trending the same exact way that the country and the state is trending. But if we look at the kids that took in eighth grade fall and then a year and a half later, we can see that green is that mastery piece where there, we're, we're closing up and more kids, there's growth. We're seeing the growth happen. And the same thing with math. And we've really struggled with math, as you can see in the data at the middle school, that trending down, trending down. I have to tell you, I, I hope you, we get these numbers and there is so much angst on our part and we need, and I have to go like, okay, Michael, it's gonna be okay. You know, and I have to like talk them out of the, because we spend so much time trying to figure out how can we best reach the students, make the classroom engaging, give them the skills that they're going to need to move forward. And when you see the numbers come out just as against, you know, the last years or the year before, it's very depressing. And then you start going deeper and looking, what, what is it that we're doing? What can we do better? And then we take something like this and we say, oh, wait a minute. Okay, let's step back. Yes, what we're getting in and what's happening is not like it used to be. But what are we doing with what we have when it, when it comes into our district? So that number, those, those numbers in those charts and the visual lets you see that while when year-to-year, our kids are not coming in in the same skill levels that they were prior to COVID. And that's just a given. And prior to, again, something we've talked about, that addiction to cell phones. It's definitely made a difference. But when they come to us, we know that they're growing from our programs. Do we want them to grow more? Oh, yes, we do. And we keep looking at that. But taking a look at this tells us that we know that we're not, we're not going to be stagnant and stay in one place. We're going to keep building those skills for them. If you go to the next slide, you will see that when we get data, we have different responses. Sometimes they're short-term, sometimes they're long-term. So let's say we get data and we say, okay, what can we do in the short term? If we know that certain students are struggling, we'll adjust their particular schedules. We might need to switch a class level for them because they're really struggling. They need that extra scaffolding or support. We may schedule students and have them move into more intervention courses. Students that we see are really struggling, we might say they might need to maybe have more testing or figure out what is it that we can do? What's missing that work, that the student is stagnating? Utilizing math and literacy coaches, which we've just been able to introduce in the last few years. Tutoring is a mean to, a means to increase student understanding. And then we also target professional development for the faculty so that they have new ways to reach students where there might be particular gaps. And that can be done within, within a year, within a few months' time. But there's also more long-term planning. Deeper exploration of the data at a more granular, granular, your low level. For example, like the PSAT, we can go into questions and we can see what questions are we missing? What particular skills are the students? And it's a semicolon every time. I'm just going to tell you on the SAT. But the data, that data tells us a story. And then we can look further out and say, what are our long-term plans? What do we have to do to meet the needs? We can get teaching practices, codifying our instructional framework. I think is going to be a really big step for us to make sure that we're teaching the best possible ways that we can. And then again, long-term instructional supports that we might need to, to help support our students. So if you go to the next slide, these are the particulars. These are the things that we have actually done in the last year or so. So we, last year, and I think I mentioned this last year, we had a group of kids come in and they were testing way lower than we had anticipated in the past. And so we actually shuffled the teams around, resection classes, did some cross-teaming to make sure that the students who are struggling the most got very targeted skill support that they needed to have to, to improve. We have been collaborating more with the elementary schools to get a sense of where they are. So now all three sending schools are using bookworms for their reading program. They just chose that this year. So I've been sort of trying to meet, I'm tomorrow going to Andover to get a sense of what that language those students will interact with in their schools. And then we can bring that into our conversations with them. So there's a continuity of learning and understanding, utilizing grant funding to support our literacy coach and our math coach. The position that was created as curriculum instruction, so there's somebody keeping an eye on this all the time. Making changes to the core structure in math. We just did that for this upcoming year so that we're actually accelerating students a little bit faster so that they have an opportunity to hit every skill that they're going to be tested on the SAT and to interact with that. Ensuring our math and writing labs are fully staffed and up increasing our data engagement as a district. So our district data team used to meet once a month. We just, I think we have three in a row, just meeting, 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 and then some of us that can stay later and drilling down more on that data. So we use it to learn about our students. We use it to understand particular areas where we're struggling. I have learned to love data strangely, because I started as an English teacher. But I really do love because it, it does, it tells a story, but it doesn't tell the whole story. And I think it's important to note that while we look deeply at this and understand that we are, you know, judged and evaluated on that. To the point of Meg's class, we also look at our students as individuals. One of our students said at one point, in our self-reliance presentations, everyone in the class made different ideas. Every brain is different, therefore making their ideas different. So if everyone in the world is creating ideas, they can come together and help the world evolve. And that was a student three years ago or four years ago, wrote that in Meg's class out of one of their units. And then, of course, another one said, the essentials of life are freedom and happiness and closure. And so this is the closure to this presentation.
I'd also just like to add that we do not have to do the PSAT eight, nine, and ten. But we choose to do that because we want to be able to, you know, monitor progress, see if we are seeing growth, try to catch things early on. No, I have to use that permission to inform my instruction or any program from children's medical services. And we also, you know, just, we take this all very seriously. We want our students to do well. But I think Brianna and Oliver will tell you that they're not just numbers on the page. They are individuals. They are students. And we also focus on our social and emotional learning. And we especially did that during COVID and after COVID. But I think that, I don't want to speak for them. I think that the students are in a really good place. You know, I think teachers also are noticing that, you know, we're finally coming out of this fog. Students are, their attention span is increasing. We now put cell phones aside and they're re-engaging in the classroom in a different way. So I think that, you know, we have a lot to be hopeful for and a lot of progress that I think we'll see as we continue.
Do you have any questions?
I, I had one I wanted to share. So I had one question, but you answered it. And I was excited to see that. It had to do with collaborating with the elementary schools. They can learn from this. Well, Penny, I totally agree that having the PSATs in place at the, at the earlier years gives you that data to strengthen the plan, right, and understand where the trends are going. We've talked about this for a couple of years now, right? And I'm really excited to see some of the steps that you're taking and the plans that are in place to start making a difference. And the data shows that it's, that it's beginning to work. So I just wanted to say thank you for that. It really seems like the plan is coming together, the, the initiative is, it's working. So. Thanks again.
Yeah, and I, I would echo those comments exactly. I think testing along the way is great to get the data together. The students are progressing, especially since it's bumpy because different cohorts experience COVID. I was just wondering if we benchmark ourselves against anybody else besides the state? Do we have schools that we, you know, do we feel good about that, whatever?
Yeah, we do have, they do share the results for the different dirgs. And so we look at it from a perspective of where we're fine within our own dirg. We haven't, you know, gotten too caught up in looking at that because, you know, I think we've always, from year to year, you kind of see it shifting. You know, everybody kind of has their moments of highs and their lows. And certainly it's something that we don't think is worth looking at, but I think looking at how our students are progressing themselves and seeing that growth is what.
Well, that's clearly the most important.
But it does exist that that.
Yeah, and you know, going to what, you know, Penny, Michael and Mary Rose are talking about, it's, it's, instead of looking at how the eighth grade did in two thousand and twenty-three and then comparing it to how the eighth grade did in two thousand and twenty-four, you're comparing apples to oranges. Right. The more important thing is growth over time. And so, you know, the, the movement up and down, kind of how we compare in the dirg can, can vary from year to year. And, and as, as, as little as like one or two percentage points can literally shift you three or four places. So again, we're, you know, it's the, it's the cohort data that we've really, really focused.
Yeah, that's clear. Yeah, that's clear.
Yeah.
One to say is like a, you know, a student, um, the AP exam ninety some, so I was really, I was really excited about to see that. Um, I think a couple of those percentage points, somebody having a bad day, you know, sort of that. Um, I just, I remember Dr. Sushis saying something along the lines of, you know, we're looking for that why, of course, I can't, you know, make a magic, you know, paragraph that says everything. But I think at least talking with students that this, that COVID, I mean, the disinterest in the SAT is such a huge part. People are like, why don't we take this? Colleges are test optional. I think that just has a really like, you know, a, a bigger impact. Because you've seen the AP exams, that these students, I mean, you know, you get college credit for it and like our students are doing really well when they are putting in the effort, they want it to well. The SAT still, a lot of it doesn't seem like the biggest deal, not to say it's a maker brain getting into college. But I mean, that's just, I think that's a point of why things are going down. And I'm like a, a separate note for writing in math lab. I'm really glad that we have more. But um, these years I've been talking to students, I mean, I, I read this before I came and I was talking to a couple of students and these views may already not reflect my own, so I just want to pre- it now. Um, students, some students at least feel that teachers in the writing or math lab aren't adequate for the class that they are taking.
Yeah.
And not that the teacher doesn't know how to teach it, it's just if they come in with a very specific problem or challenging problem, round number two, I mean, I remember Ms. Dormant's class, and those problems were ridiculously complicated. I mean, Ms. Dormant would know how to do, I mean, just however many years, but I mean, I just, a general sense that I've been getting is that more math than, and you know, the writing lab, that some students feel that like, it's the higher level, you know, the calculus level.
Yeah.
AP pre-cas, that the teachers aren't adequate for helping the students they need immediately.
And you mean the ones who might be landing that.
That.
Teaching themselves in that subject area.
Yeah. And that's just, that's, yeah, that's an unfortunate, yeah, that's, and that's hard. I mean, I know that, you know, if you're taking calculus and there's a teacher who teaches mainly geometry or algebra one and they're in math lab, you know, they, they've taken calculus, but they're not going to be as, as quick at um, reading it for you or helping you with it. Yeah, that's some unfortunate element of our.
Yeah, well, one of the things that we're also looking at is peer tutoring. You know, we certainly have a strong group of students that, you know, particularly might be very strong in math and can be available to help their peers, especially we're looking at sort of a high school, middle school model as well. Um, I think there's certainly something to be said about that. And just having that maybe that understanding of how a teenage brain works and what works for them and what kind of approach works better. So certainly open to options, and I appreciate what um, Oliver's saying in terms of the SATs because you know, certainly the SAT was the test that students needed to take to make sure that they can get into college and to the colleges they wanted to. Now, you know, especially during COVID, but even starting before COVID and now after COVID, many colleges, universities are saying test optional or, you know, it's not necessarily something that's going to make or break their ability to get into a school. They, they thankfully recognize that the student is not just a SAT score. And to Oliver's point, you know, when a student knows that something is going to be impactful on their own life, such as perhaps getting a credit, a college credit in an AP exam, um, is they come into it with a little bit of a different motivation. Um, but I also say too that for PSATs and SATs, they've all become digital now, which is not the case in the past. Um, one of the things that I think students are getting used to, and again, you can maybe speak to this better, but the, the interface online and using like the decimals calculator for the math on the computer is not something you're familiar with. Um, just as like trying to maneuver through, it's like reading a passage and being able to go talk to the questions. And so there's some of that, that's just sort of the logistical mechanical piece of it, that we're also, um, teachers are going to be spending time in classes to help them with that piece of it, just because we don't want that to be disadvantaged. So that's something that we're now that it's changed and, and we are to, to the test. Um, those are things that we will be hoping to expose our students to.
The only other two points I have to make is, it's especially peer tutoring. I just got um, certified to help peer tutoring in the SAT. There's this great website through Khan Academy, it's called Schoolhouse. I've heard of it. But I mean, anybody who can get certified, um, you can, like, I think it's just a great resource, I mean, everyone across the world can get certified and you can go in make sessions, like I'm going to make a session to help, you know, students in the SAT, you can volunteer hours for it. I mean, it's a great resource. I think not only can students become a peer tutor, but like they can use that. I think that might be an interesting, I mean, I might start using it recently in my classes, but um.
But that's why it should be that peer tutoring, peer tutoring can be a very viable.
And uh, um, interface that you're talking about with decimals, I mean, I've taken so many practice tests. It's wild, but systems of equations, you know, a huge part in algebra one. You can do it all in the calculator. You've never ever have like, since the digital SAT, like that one, you know, section map, you never ever have to do it on a piece of paper. You can just put it in the calculator and it's, as long as you know how to do it, you can solve the most complicated problems, like I've done, you know, dozens and dozens of problems. You can just plug in and chug, and as it said, learning that interface.
Right. And that's why it sets a priority for us, make sure that students have a chance to practice that.
And did you do that on your own time?
Yeah.
Did you do that in a class?
Yeah, I did that on my own.
But that is going to start by. Oh, now that, now that that is the standard for all the PSAT and SATs, but there wasn't enough until this past year that that um, that they've all become digital. So uh, the teachers are part of, they're part of some of the math teachers' goals this year is to expose students to that face, um, those types of problems. Just getting very familiar and at ease so that, that is not something that is very capable.
I just had a quick question. So you mentioned about your um, data teams and I'm trying to figure it out. So in the elementary level, we do universal screenings throughout the year. So we're looking at, we're looking at data really across the year. We're looking at unit data, so forth. So do you have other data, right? Because you're, you're looking at obviously the PACTs and Oliver, I agree with you a hundred percent. My son's a junior and he will do very well in the SAT. He's not really that concerned about them. He's more concerned about AP classes, college credit. So, um, but so do you have other data that you're looking at and who is part of your data teams? Do, do your, do they meet by grade levels? Do they meet, are teachers involved, special ed teachers? Lots of questions. You, you make the agenda and you make the powerpoint work from so.
So in years past, we've had data teams both at the district level and each at school. This year, we've, we've sort of moved, shifted a little bit towards all of our coordinators are part of the data team. So we're using the, the coordinators as a district-wide data team. Uh, recently we've broken up into two groups. There is a group that looked at the high school data and the middle school data, and we just started looking at cohort go across, because the question is, is where, where are we falling? Where are we falling down? My question about the why piece is part of it is motivation, which is an SCL component. But part of it is also, if we dig deeper, is there something curriculum-wise we need to change? And so it's something we're exploring. I mean, I'm you walk around here on a Friday, you'll find out I'm all about trying something different. And seeing what works. And if it works, try to replicate it over and over. Uh, so our data team is our district coordinators at the school level. Obviously, the coordinators, a lot of them are high school teachers, so they're looking at the high school data, a lot of them. Some that are middle school, like a middle school. My team leaders in the past have been looking into data. Actually, we just talked about the other day about doing a data dive for middle school. We have the PSAT eights coming up tomorrow morning. So if you want to see frenzy, that'll be tomorrow morning, but we should get the scores back by January. And then we'll start looking a little deeper. Can we change something for the eighth graders for their experience going forward? The hard part is, we do monitor, we have a Northwest Education Association called NEWA and WEA. We do use that test for both math and reading. Uh, we've gotten very good at it, so we know the cutoff scores for our students for seventh and eighth grade. We actually test sixth graders in the spring. Collaboration with Ascending Towns, they allow us to test their, the students then. So we get a pre-screening idea of where they are math-wise. And this past year.
Yeah, we did a screening for ELA, just a shorter one, but it gave us a much better snapshot of who is coming in and where the needs might be ahead of, instead of scrambling first order to try to create something to meet the needs. We had a little bit more information. So we were able to create supportive um, spaces.
Yeah, and I can tell you that all this data, because it's a lot. All this data goes into an analytical program called Performance Matters. It allows us to pull up a student and all their scores over the course of the years to look at. Are they in the red zone, the green zone, the yellow zone approaching where they are? So that's where the individual teachers come in, look at it. The hard part is, we now have to figure out how to get teachers who are in eighth grade to come with like social studies teacher sitting here. And how he can look at the data for his ninth graders going back to see how they did on the test, on the PSAT nine. Because that's going to be a question too. Their teaching strategies. It's hard because the continuum is seven, eight. We have them for two years, then they go to nine, twelve. So we need to bring some of that data back. So that's sort of part two and great.
Yeah, the, the, the charts that I created, I created by downloading spreadsheets and then just going through and sorting so that I could get and then create those. So they, those, those weren't as easy to access, but.
We can get lost in a data with no problem.
Yeah, yeah.
There's hours at, at time ago, and some of you may, may know that have done it yourself, but you can pick and choose. Ultimately, I do recall what a board member once said, and this was about not a board member, a student rep once said, but had to be about eight years ago. And they basically got up in the board and said, I'm not enough. Numbers don't define me. And they don't. There's a whole other component to it. And that's when you start talking about, why do scores go down? It may not be because of ability. It could be something else. So we're trying to figure out the bigger puzzle.
And to that, and I think, you know, the high school doesn't have universal screens. There's just really nothing out there for high school levels, but you know, we do look at our, um, we do compare the student. Sort of like not, or kind of like right in that bubble where they can move right off being in the passing zone or being, you know, benchmark. Um, and seeing what classes they're in, what levels are at the end, you know, what are their grades in those classes? Um, are there shifts that we need to make in the programs, in the programmatic, you know, leveling and or sequence of courses, um, just as past year, we made a change for our eighth graders going into ninth grade for a group of students who were just not getting exposed to the algebra that they needed at the SAT grade eleven point in time. Um, so we should, didn't make adjustments there. So, you know, we're, we're, we certainly, we certainly are looking and figuring it out.
Yeah. I, I look at more data about five and six-year-olds and I care to share with anybody, so.
Oh, I'll.
Just wanted to. It, I mean, as I've taken how many times, it's, it's, it's a sad fact, but the SAT more than a test ability, a test your abilities, setting you for the test. And I see that like, I, I have taken, you know, I, I mean, I've seen you now, so I've taken those many half-class English classes. That it's like those English classes I'm learning, growing, you know, as throughout the years, but then you get to this SAT problem. It's like, I know this. You, you look at the problem, you go, I know how to do this. You know, or I should know how to do this. We've been taught this. But just the wording or certain little things that get you, it's just, it's sad that you have to study how to take that test. What is this question asked me? What are the wording that I need to look at? And be like, because I'm sure a lot of students will score a lot better if, you know, like there's some magic, they instantly understand what that question is asking you. You look, oh, okay, so this is what I need to do. And using my algebra two knowledge or, you know, using my English knowledge, I know how to get to that answer. But I just really, really think it's a test designed. How well can you study for that test? And part obviously of your own ability.
Yeah.
But it's, it's just a sad fact. And I was talking with um, it's your chance actually, and not team. And I said, one of the biggest things that teachers have done for me is added SAT questions embedded into a test that we have done. So it's like, at the end, it's not working any point, or maybe it's worked, I don't, I don't remember the specifics. But it was like, you're doing a test on quadratics, or you know, you're doing tests in grammar and English, and at the very end, you get an SAT question on that topic. And you're like, oh, now I see how that relates to quadratic. Now I see how that relates to, you know, grammar or whatever. But like before, you did not make that connection. You know grammar, you know, you know, you know, etc. or whatever. But making that connection is the hardest part.
And then that's what, that's part of what people will start.
Work have already started.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for.
Thank you.
Presentation. Okay, uh, possible action regarding the Cabe Board Leadership.
Yes, so um, I wanted to inform board members that each year at the Caves Caps Convention, which is coming up in mid-November, boards of education from across the state are recognized for their leadership through uh, the Cabe Board Recognition Awards. These awards are designed to recognize boards that provide effective leadership to districts through the use of best practices. In order to be eligible, boards must meet certain criteria in the following areas: board leadership, student achievement, board member professional development, policy, community relations, and organizational leadership. So a few weeks ago, in collaboration with Heather, um, I submitted the necessary paperwork for the Region Eight Board to be recognized. And I'm happy to report that the board has been selected to receive an award and be recognized at the Caves Cap Convention on November fifteenth. Um, the, what we have to do though, is the board has to approve the submission of the application. I have so the reason that this worked is I had to submit the application by a certain debt, by a certain day. And that was before this board meeting. So I was in touch with member, or with, with uh, leadership at Cave and said, well, can I submit the uh, documentation, apply for the award? And then on the October meeting that we have on the twenty-first, have the board approve the um, uh, you know, approve the um, the application. And they said that that was totally permissible. So we're doing things in a little bit of reverse order, but I want to congratulate everybody because you uh, you, you're going to be recognized for the award, but there is a um, a recommended motion in your board notes to um, to authorize me to submit the application.
So do we have a motion to approve the application for the Cabe Board Leadership Recognition Award? That was Mike Bullier.
Second.
Second, Joe Coletti. Any other discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Okay. That brings us to the first read of, of policies.
So there are several policies that came to, let me just make sure. Uh, there were several policies that the Policy Subcommittee met and discussed um, a couple of weeks ago when we had our October meeting. Um, and we're bringing them to you. Some are coming for revision and some are coming for deletion. The first one on the agenda is eleven point four, policy three, two, one, zero, Student Activity Fund. Um, this is a policy that has been updated to reflect current practices. If I'm remembering correctly, there's actually only one minor change in the policy itself. The substantive changes are actually in the regulations associated with the policies. So um, and Eva certainly here can, and can um, e- e- explain um, those changes. If there's board members with any questions. Uh, you okay if I just keep going?
Yeah.
All right. Um, the next policy is thirty-two hundred school district receipts of money, and we're recommending this one for deletion. Um, this is an unnecessary policy and does not align with the current practices. The, it actually alludes to the board treasure um, of having um, a responsibility of, of receiving money and um, which we don't do that. So um, it's not something that we want to make sure, we don't want to maintain this policy. Um, and so we're recommending uh, deletion of this policy. It is unnecessary um, per our attorneys. The next one is policy five, four, one, zero, Interscholastic Athletics and Interscholastic Activities. Again, another one that we're recommending for deletion. This is an unnecessary policy and what we've done is I think it's two sentences. One is specific to intramural athletics. The other one is specific to clubs and activities. What we've done is we've taken the language that is within this policy, again, unnecessary to be a policy, and we've put them on our athletics webpage, plus the um, webpages for clubs at both schools. So we're making sure that we are including the language. It's just unnecessary for it to be in a policy, which is why we are recommending deletion. Um, the next one is policy fifty-four, eleven, intramural athletics for deletion. This uh, the district has not done intramural sports for many years. Um, and even if we were doing intramural sports, this is an unnecessary policy, even if we do offer them in the future. So we are recommending deletion of that. So we are recommending deletion of that one. The next one is Disposition of Unused Sick Days Upon Retirement. This is a policy that is specific for non-union, non-affiliated, or non-represented employees. And it talks about how unused sick days are, there's a payout for a certain number of, or a certain percentage of unused sick days upon retirement. What I explained to the Policy Subcommittee is this is information that is really specifically should be in employee contracts, which it is included when, when contracts are shared with employees. So it does not need to be a school policy, I'm sorry, a school board policy. So we're recommending deletion of that. The next one is Policy two, one, one, zero, Superintendent of Schools General. Again, another one for deletion. It's an unnecessary policy that simply mirrors language found, found within state statutes. And so we are recommending that this one be deleted. The next one is Policy two, two, one, zero, Principals General. Just gives an outline. It's generically speaking, it says, the principal works under the supervision and direction of the superintendent. It's an unnecessary policy. We have job descriptions that describe the work of what principals do, and we are recommending deletion. The next one is School Visitors. Adjustments have been made to this policy. This is a policy that came to the Policy Subcommittee back in the spring, back last spring. There was some feedback that I received based, based off of some concerns about the language. I worked to modify the language. I also communicated the concerns that had been shared with our school board attorney, who I work with collaboratively to update policies and the recommendation. And then I shared that recommendation, or shared that feedback with the Policy Subcommittee. I do know that there are going to be, I think Mr. Shoyad's going to express some concerns about the language of this policy. I don't want to. So I'll just go through if you're okay with this, and then we'll, we'll get through it. And then the last policy is Policy ninety-six, ten, which is Student Representatives. The, this policy change would enable a Rams Middle School student to serve on the board as a student rep along with the two Ram High School reps. This is a suggestion actually that came to us after a recent meeting that we had. Typically policies, so basically the only change to this policy is that we would add a middle school representative. Typically, policies go through two readings before they are approved and, and changes go into effect. The board does have some latitude to have this policy go through a single reading. The language of the policy on policy says that in emergency situations, I'm making my air quotes when I say emergencies. The reason I would recommend that the board consider adopting this policy after a single reading is because the changes are pretty benign. We're being somewhat presumptuous that the board is going to be on, in favor of making this change. And this would also give Dr. Shirozzi the opportunity to identify who the middle school representative is going to be and have them seated for the November meeting as opposed to waiting another two months to identify that board representative from the middle school. That was a lot. I'm happy to entertain any questions about any of the policies. And as I said, I know Mr. Shoyad has some feedback that he wants to provide about the school visitors.
And what I really want is just feedback from other members. And sorry, Drew and Gabe, you're excluded. You already had this discussion. But I don't know who's had a chance to read it, and if you've got it in front of you, the fifteen, ten. The second paragraph in there. If you can look at it and tell me if you understand it. Second paragraph, the board further desires.
I don't, not with that explanation.
I don't understand.
You still feel like they, they have a good sense of it? And of course, this, this was just the point I was trying to make, is that if we can't understand it, how do we expect the other people reading it to understand? So, but I, I came back with a, questions about this, suggestions about this. And Colin brought it to the lawyer, who said, no, this is very precise and exact, and this is what we mean. But I don't think it means what we think it means. And like, right. And this is actually supposed to be about, mostly about IEPs and PPT visitations. It's, it's not a general visitation policy. If you read through the documents that the lawyers gave us, they talk about that. But I make no sense of it from here. I mean, it does, the last sentence says, you know, the IEE, Independent Educational Evaluation. If you happen to know what that is, maybe you could find out, you could figure it out. But basically, I find this totally unreadable. And my sense is that policy is not for the lawyers. And I've talked about this before, and you're probably all tired of me hearing this, me saying that hearing this from me. But policy is for us, it's for Colin, it's for the staff, it's for the students, it's for the community. It's not for the lawyers. And if we can't understand it, it's not really good policy. So.
I mean, I understand it to mean that if a parent wants to come and observe their child in their educational setting, they work in conjunction with the administrators to allow them to sit.
That's how, that's the way to read it.
So that's what I got from.
That, that's the best way to read it, but it really is supposed to be about PPTs, IE, you know, IEP, IE, whatever.
Well, IEP is like an individual education.
Right. That's.
Yeah, PPT is a meeting.
Right. So they talked about this, when, when they went to support this, they sent, you know, they sent Colin back and he sent back to the Policy Committee a couple of documents. And they're all about the, about those things, about special needs, about whatever. And not about, you know, hey, I want to go in and see, you know, watch this teacher versus that teacher and see which one I think is better for my student. It's, it's not there. It's, it's more about those things. What I'm concerned with is that this language doesn't tell the story. It doesn't explain what it's about. And the lawyers push back when I said something. They say, no, no, this is, this is precise, and we really want to capture these things. But I don't think it captures those things at all. I don't know if you can share those documents or the.
Sure.
What, what, what the lawyer sent to you.
Yeah, so I could, I could just read briefly if.
So I've got, I've got it too, but I'm, I'm just thinking the documents.
Yeah, absolutely. So, so basically what, what the attorneys had shared with me was the language regarding observations in schools is related to in-school observations pursuant to guidance from the State Bureau of Special Education in accordance with IDEA. And then she shared links to some docs, which I can certainly share with board members. This, this below paragraph, the paragraphs below refer to working with parents that have an educational nexus to, one, the district because they are a resident, two, its educational programs because the PPT has proposed placement of the child in a, in a program within the district. Or three, the student is being observed in parentheses, one requested to observe an actual student, close parentheses, and allowing these parents to observe the child's current classroom or replacement that is being proposed through the PPT process. The language is meant to be very precise and as to limit observations not pursuant to the law. We typically refer to schools as the boards, not, but this language can be changed and preferred. So, so the feedback that I received from the attorney is, don't change this language. And, and I, if the board chooses to try to simplify this, we could certainly, I could work collaboratively with our attorney to try to come up with, with language that simplifies it and meets the standards that the board has. What I would say is, I, I agree with Scott from the standpoint of policies are not written for attorneys. They are written for people to understand. But I will also say that policies are written in a way that attorneys who we rely on to defend us when things are challenged, need to be written in a certain way, which is my presumption as to why this, this person is saying the language should stand as it is.
But, but when you just read that, it, that made more sense. So you, it, it read, number one, that makes more sense. This doesn't. I'm, I know what IEPs are. I know, I know all of this. And this doesn't make sense to me. The wording of it doesn't make sense. I think it would be better written if it was more in lines of what the attorney said back. So did the attorney send back with an educational nexus with the district if number one? Or did you just read it that way?
Yeah, if it was like bulleted the way.
It was.
Yeah, I, I read, I read what they, what they.
Much more, look, I could understand that, that these are the three reasons why the, why the, why the school is working with a parent. These are the three reasons, and this is why some of it might be limited. Right? We have to be really careful about, about not allowing parents to come into schools who observe their children. Like, that's a tricky situation, very tricky. So to me, that made sense. Number one, this reason. Number two, this reason. This. I wanted to get out my, my marker and edit it.
It's just the first sentence is too.
It doesn't, it doesn't even make sense.
Yeah, it's that first sentence.
It doesn't make sense.
How often do we get people coming in to observe their children? Is this a daily?
No, no, it's, it's.
You have to be protective for that one.
Yeah, I understand that. Yeah, it's, it's, it is not something that frequently happens. What it typically does happen is specifically what it refers to, which is when there's a situation where a certain program is being proposed that a student participated in, typically a special education program. And a parent says, well, I want to see what that program looks like. That gives them the opportunity. In some cases, it could be an advocate coming in to look at the program or somebody who has, has a connection to the child who's coming in to look at the program. It, it does not happen very often. What, it certainly, but, but when it does happen, it's, we want to make sure that we are very, very much in line with, this is what's permissible and this is what's not. Because typically when parents can get contentious about that, there are generally attorneys involved.
It happens, and there are usually advocates and attorneys involved.
Yeah, correct.
So the language has to be there, but it needs to be clarified.
Yeah, just requires a frame of reference. Yeah.
I mean, because I, I do think that the bullets help make it very specific and kind of build some boundaries on, on why you can come in. So if we could add that, would that?
I, I think if we clarified it, it'd be fine. I just, I, I think it's a problem that we have far too often. This was the worst case I've seen so far. Something that was just, I read it six times, eight times, still didn't really know what they were talking about. It's only when I got down into the regulations that I had some sense that it was about special ed.
Okay, so. It sounds like they tried to use too much of an economy of words.
Yeah.
Instead of just saying what they did for the explanation, including that in the policy, they say that's a policy.
It's an important policy.
Yeah.
Even, even just the use of the pronoun there. I had to read back again to see who the there was that they were referring to. I get it now, but it took me a few tries.
I, I, my, my bullets talk about to work with parents, with a nexus, with the district, huh? And then, or the student being observed, what's the parallel to the student that or is referring to? I'm not sure. And then the next one was to observe their students and their current class with second, theirs. Who stepped first?
Maybe they should try again.
With a little bit of a description. Okay.
It's important, but it doesn't make sense the way it's written.
Okay. Well, I'm glad I'm not alone. I don't want to belabor this. We go back to them. Yeah. If you want me in on that, I'm willing to, you know, you want.
I'll take a stab at it. I think a stab at it.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions on the other policies? Okay, then we have to have a motion to adopt.
Yep, nope. I just want to make sure we didn't miss.
Nope. To adopt Policy nine, six, one, oh, which is the student representative as presented. We have, Gabe Marks is first, and so yeah, is second. Any other discussion on that one? Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Anyone abstaining? And it brings us to financials.
Let me turn it over. So eleven point five A, you're going to see in the packet is your budget appropriation. And this is basically for the month July, August, and September. In July, August, and September, we have lots of short, I guess is the best word that I can come up with at the moment. So that we line up where people move within the building, or buildings, I should say, so that we keep salaries equitable based on where the person is, so that I'm reporting on them accurately. That's why a lot of this is, is moving. One of the questions was referring to journal entries twenty-four through twenty-eight. And the negotiation provision is basically where we put money aside. We budget the money for non-representative people, such as the Superintendent Director of IT, the building subs, myself, we're all in there. There are also like the three union contracts that were just negotiated this year. They weren't finalized before the budget process was adopted. And so we needed to put that money somewhere, so we put it in the negotiation provision law. So and then we moved those monies up to cover whatever shortfalls have occurred because it wasn't there in the, in the timeframe that it needed to be. Or on July first is when we get our pay. So that's when we have to start putting in money. If that answers that question. So then entry number seven was the journal entry. And this is where I have to apologize to everyone for that moment of humanity. So the transaction is accurate. It is very accurate. The description that I provided was inaccurate. So what the transaction was about was our lease purchase, the percentage rate that we were calculating at, how much that we can purchase. Present, it was higher. So our sixty thousand dollars didn't buy us as much as we needed to buy. So we were short buying five desktops. So that six thousand five hundred seventy-five dollars is for the five desktops to keep everything on the same replacement cycle. So we didn't have to push any, anybody off. But what the reference point there was that there was a company that bought out a software vendor. So it's Broadcom, I believe is the name, bought out VMware. And so it like, would have it, we do not have to do that transfer. That came out today. So I'm like, so that was, that's a positive there. So that answers your questions now. The other question, so journal entry sixteen, forty-five thousand dollars was to repair the elevator at the the top of the stairs of the middle school path. Unfortunately, our elevators are original to the building. So for the first couple of days of school, we weren't able to utilize that elevator. And unfortunately for middle school students who have crutches or other needs and can't do the stairs, that was kind of inconvenient. So we had a workaround to get us, to get the kids to lunch or lunch to the kid as the, as it might be. And so what happened and the reason why I knew when we had put the budget together, we had a Latin teacher, we had a late resignation, and unfortunately, we weren't able to fill that position. So that's why the money was available to do this emergency repair. Journal entry thirty-five. Yes, so basically, I know it seems like a lot of moving parts back and forth. But so I take whatever available funds are for like summer school that have ended. And I knew that summer school teacher were done and there was no retro pay coming to them. So we took the available funds, move it up to unallocated. Then we take the unallocated funds, that bucket that I create there, and then I spread it out to where it needs to go to. Journal entry forty.
Before you leave that.
Yes, sir.
So, but they're line net one and line nineteen. Both from the same. It's label is the same, unallocated personnel, unallocated personnel.
Correct. So I may have put money, so I may have put money in and I may have taken money out to cover something. So.
But isn't that a net sort of nothing?
Is it the same dollar?
It's not, well, one hundred eighty-two thousand and one hundred eighty-nine thousand. So it looks like.
It, it's close, but not so good. So. So basically, yes, so the dollar amount might have been close enough to, to confuse or to make it look like it was. And can I break it out into two separate journal entries? Yes, I can.
But, but are they, I mean, what I'm having trouble with is they're both unallocated personnel, but.
They're inside.
So, no, they're on opposite side. So what's, so is that what's going on?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so journal entry forty suggests. Okay, so yes, we had to move a staff member into a new location and we had to buy furniture for that location. So. Um, so, because again, there was funds that I knew were unspoken for, that's where I took the funds from, because it was just easier than henpecking and trying to. Play guessing game at this point of the fiscal year. Um, journal entry forty-two, um, so basically a kiln was ordered last school year. The kiln was never delivered, but the kiln was needed in this school year. So knowing that we had taken some of the supplies. Purchased it last school year for this school year. And had to do a transfer in this full year to pay for the kiln that was, that has arrived. This is how we make, make it all work. Um, and then path in journal entry fifty-six stands for peer assisting for student success. So I think I've answered all of those questions, so does anyone else have any other questions on this? Okay, hearing none, I will need a motion for, um, the approval of the transfers. And I'm hoping that someone has a motion.
I do. That's, uh, we need, we have a motion to reallocate available funds from completed projects.
Yes, that's not it. No, we don't have a motion. Okay, so basically I need a motion. To accept the transfers totaling one point three one nine, so one million three hundred nineteen thousand eight hundred twenty-six dollars and seventy-five cents. For the month of July through September.
So moved. Hold on a second.
I want to school.
No, no, go ahead.
Okay, I thought you said one of these entries was negated or?
No, 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 it was the reason I stated it. So the entry is correct, it was just my rationale for it.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so do, do we have a motion?
Yeah.
I made motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
I, I.
Opposed? Anyone abstaining? Okay, now goes to C.
So, um, there's an enclosure, enclosure eleven point five is, um, in your board packet, which talks about a reallocation of fund from. Reallocation of funds from projects that have been completed. On the memo, you'll, you'll see that there are, um, the remaining balances from, from, um, projects that have been. Some from capital projects that have been completed. It ranges anywhere from seventy cents, uh, over budget for the replacement Kubota mower, but there's also two to, to three thousand dollars. From repairs of sidewalk and curbing, so there's a range of projects that have been completed and there was, uh, we were slightly, uh, we budgeted higher than the, the cost of the projects. There were two projects that were, uh, where there's a significant amount of money left over and where, um, there's thirty thousand dollars left over from the HVAC replacement for central office. And thirty-six thousand dollars for the installation of security film on large glass, and I can provide a context as to why. Those projects were, were budgeted over what the actual cost is. Uh, the replacement unit for the central office was budgeted at a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. We received bids ranging from ninety-four thousand dollars to a hundred and four fifty thousand dollars for that project. And it was awarded to the, uh, most qualified lowest bidder at ninety-four thousand dollars, so therefore we have approximately thirty-one thousand dollars left over of a balance. And then the second one, which is the security film, the vendor quote for the window film project, uh, included windows in the project that were not intended to be a part of the project. And as a result, there's a positive balance. Uh, in that project as well, um, of thirty-six thousand nine hundred and ninety-five, um, so. We just need to, uh, have a motion, which is in your board notes to allocate the, those funds from into capital non-recurring unallocated. Correct.
So it's, um, to reallocate the available funds from completed projects to unallocated. In the amount of seventy-four thousand four hundred and ninety-one dollars and eighty-eight cents into capital non-recurring. Was that Mike or?
Mike.
Mike Bollier? In a second?
Awesome.
Second is Mike Sharon. Any other discussion on that?
Just how are we so far off on that Kubota mower?
We just didn't do our homework.
All in favor? Opposed? Anyone abstaining? Okay.
Thank you for those, and so moving on, we have, um, eleven point five C. So at the end of September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, there is proposed net principal position of forty-five thousand fifty-three dollars. Um, currently, all of October first enrollments are being reviewed and certified, and if they were certified. Now, um, the state and/or the magnet schools and the agrarian science schools are developing their invoices. So again, if we remember from last year, we're only, per legislation, we're only being charged fifty-eight percent. Of what we were charged at the tuition rate for the year prior. So we're gonna have about forty-two percent of that dollar amount left. Um, but we might have had more enrollment than was last year, so we have to wait till all the bills are finalized before I say. What the actual dollar amount is that's left. Um, the capital improvement fund is, um, still awaiting, unfortunately, Dr. Shubuski. One, um, tack board that has not come. And then the middle school baseball field ADA project is, uh, finalizing the bid documents and the technical specifications so that we can go out to bid. I want to say we're going operating G. Um, capital non-referring, non-recurring fund is still working on the material containment center that we're still awaiting planning and zoning's approval. Because there's, um, a survey now that we are going to need to do unfortunately. So are there any questions that I can ask for the?
So just to be extra clear, the potential lift from the. Hundred percent budget is not. That's what I thought, just wanted to say it out loud.
Okay, so hearing no questions, I'm gonna keep moving on then. Um, eleven point five B is the food service, um, as of September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. At this time, we realized a net loss of twenty-five thousand six hundred eight dollars and three cents. The district is currently participating in something called the State of Connecticut's State Transition Assistance for Reduced Price, they're known as STAR. Um, so this allows for children who are qualified as a reduced priced student. Um, to eat one breakfast meal and one lunch meal for free on a daily basis. And the state gives us the differential to help make up what we are losing in that regard. Um, and hopefully at some point the state will pass some legislation to eliminate charging off workers, we don't have to keep bouncing back and forth. But are there any questions that the board may have on food service? Okay, so hearing none, I'm gonna keep going. Student activity is eleven point five E. Um, as of September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, we have yet again successfully balanced. Are there any questions on student activity that? So hearing none, the stiff account, unfortunately, the stiff account took a small hit as of September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Um, as you may be aware, the Federal Reserve, um, lowered interest rates. And so I think the state followed suit in terms of the, the way that they invest, so that, um, they could be a little bit more conservative. Unfortunately, it wasn't much, but we lost a few pennies here. Are there any questions that the board may ask on that? Thank you very much.
Actually, we have a. We talked about.
The potential of moving more money and.
Yes.
Yes, so I'm sort of watching the interest rate right now because I can negotiate with our bank too, to see if they might give us a better way.
Excellent, thank you.
Yeah.
Before we move on to committee reports, I just wanted to step back just for a moment. I noticed as we were going through our policies. There's a student activity fund policy at the very top, eleven point four A, policy thirty-two ten, that's a new first read, correct? Correct. We didn't take any action on that one, but we did on student representative, ninety-six, ten, eleven point four I. Correct. Was actually necessary on the student. No, that, that'll come to a second read next month. The reason that we took the action on the student rep is so that we can seat the student rep for our November meeting, but the student activity funds can, can wait until next month. And, and go through a first read this month, second read next month for board. Okay, did we say somewhere in here that student representative was a second read?
It was the first read.
It's the first read.
We, we, we said that we're gonna make an exception to the second read policy for that one, so that we could seat the student next, next week.
Yeah, okay, I missed that detail in the conversation. Thank you.
All right.
Thanks for recording the time.
So committee reports.
No, eleven six.
Oh, what did I miss?
So we added.
Oh, sorry. That's right.
So just.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-seven contract between the Region Eight Board of Education and Region Eight Paraeducators. Joe Coletti is first, second.
Awesome.
Amy Romanchuk is, is second, and then.
So I'll just, I'll just do, give a, a quick overview of, of some of the substantive changes, so. Um, for the first year of this contract with our paraeducators, we're gonna do a market adjustment. Para professionals at. Para professionals at step one will get a dollar fifty market adjustment. Uh, para professionals at step two will get a, a dollar seventy-five market adjustment. And para professionals at step three will get a two dollar market adjustment. Um, so, so that's in the first year of the contract, instead of just doing a, a single percentage applied to all of the paras. Uh, it's based off of their, uh, experience in the district. Uh, for twenty-five, twenty-six, there's gonna be a three point two five percent GWI increase. And in twenty-six, twenty-seven, there's gonna be another three point two five percent GWI increase. Uh, the total cost over the three years of the contract is two hundred, is approximately two hundred thirty-three thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Again, I, I, I know the paras appreciate the board's, uh, desire and, and work to, to make that market adjustment in year one, to, to make their salaries, uh, more, more competitive. Uh, for insurance. Over the three years of the contract, they're gonna move one percentage point up for their premium cost share. Uh, it's gonna remain at eighteen point five in year one, it's gonna go to nineteen percent in year two. And in the third year of the contract, it'll go up to nineteen point five percent. Uh, a couple of other changes, just increased life insurance benefit from ten thousand to twenty thousand dollars. And finally, family members can also now access dental insurance, which they, prior to this, they have not had the opportunity to do so. And so those are the significant financial changes, so we did add, uh, Labor Day as a paid holiday. Frontloading sick leave after their first year of employment, instead of them accruing days, one, uh, one, one day per month. Um, we're providing up to five, uh, sick days per year to be used, um, for illness or injury of a family member. And then, uh, we're adding language that provides them with five days and for even, you know, like for, uh, death in the immediate family. So I just wanted to make sure that we publicly were putting out some of the, some of the positive changes that we're making.
Anybody have any other questions on that? Okay, um, all in favor?
I am.
Opposed? Anyone abstaining? Okay. Okay. That brings us, and I signed this before the.
This is nurses.
Oh, that's nurses, okay. Um, okay, so that brings us to the committee reports. Facilities didn't meet in October.
We didn't meet October, but we are planning to meet November twenty-sixth, where we'll have content.
Okay.
To, we proposals heading into the capital.
Okay. Finance, audit, compliance and insurance did not meet in October. Okay. Negotiations. Getting November.
We did, yeah, so we, we kick off negotiations with our teachers' bargaining unit, I think November twelfth.
Okay. Policy.
We did meet in October, um, I was actually not at the meeting, however, and correct me if I'm wrong. I, uh, just continuation of going through the policies to determine to the board for. Addition, deletion or correction.
Okay. Um, program and communication did not meet in October.
Well, it looks like we're meeting November sixth.
November sixth, okay, and school choice did not meet in October, but they're scheduled November sixth. Okay, and then Carrie, anything on cave?
Nothing on cave.
Anyone else going to conference?
Okay. Um. Public comments, Hebron Andover Marlboro Community Engagement and Attendance at BOE public meetings is welcomed. The public comment segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the BOE may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Cause the BOE is limited by the Freedom of Information Act to discussing only matters on the agenda. The BOE is not permitted to engage in a discussion of the comments presented. Anyone, um. Is there anyone here that would like to make public comment? Anybody online would like to make public comments? We're good. Okay. Item fourteen, informational.
So we have a, a busy few weeks in front of us, we have our, uh, fall band performance from middle school and high school band and concert, uh, band and choir, that's this week, it's Thursday night, looking forward to that. Uh, we have Veterans Day recognition coming up in early November, um, both in middle school and high school. We also have our unified theater production, which is going to be November seventh, I believe. Great opportunity to come and see some really good stuff, if you've never had an opportunity to come to our Drama United show, it's.
Student discipline.
Student discipline, the reports are in the back of your packet. Haven't had a lot so far, so.
That's good.
Heroes across the board.
Yeah.
All right. Um, okay, and, uh, so. This'll close the regular meeting, we're gonna go into executive session, um, do we have a motion to enter?
A move.
Do we have to enter into a second session for the purpose of discussing? Of discussion concerning an attorney-client privileged communication related to the Board of Education's role. In employee separation agreements and the Board of Education's role in disciplinary proceedings. Further move to invite Superintendent Colin McNamara and Board Attorney Jessica Ritter to the executive session. So, you have a motion, Mike?
Yeah.
So Mike Bollier is first and Scott Soya is second, any other discussion on that? All in favor?
I am.
Opposed? Anyone abstaining? Okay, the regular meeting is adjourned.